Good evening. We wish to call the Lee County Board of Commissioners to order here at the McSwain Center on this Monday, October 2nd of 2023. If you would please rise with us for the invocation followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
If everyone, if we could have a moment of silence. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We do have a well-attended audience today. Just a reminder to turn off your cell phones or silence them. And if you forgot and they happen to go off, we'll just stop and wait and finish your... That's what I used to do with my students. It worked well about once or twice. All right. You have the agenda in front of you. We do need to add a closed session to the agenda for this evening, so we'll put it on after the Commissioner's comments for a closed session. Anything else to add to the agenda? Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Motion's been made to approve the agenda adding a closed session. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Do you have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented? Motion's been made to approve the consent agenda as presented. Any discussion? Seeing there is none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. We do have public comments this evening. And as I call you forward, please come to the podium. Make sure you state your name as well as your address. And you do have three minutes to speak. William West is the first individual. Evening, sir.
Good evening, sir. Hi, everyone. Yes, my name is William West. I live at 5000 Broadwood Drive, Sanford, North Carolina, 27330. And I'm here to advocate for my sports organization, Brick City Tigers of Sanford. And I'd like to read my mission statement for our organization. We are nonprofit, 501(c)(3), and we are advocating for a grant. So our mission statement is, Brick City Tigers of Sanford, although we are a sports organization that offers football and cheer as an outlet for kids from six to 14 years old, our organization is more than just about football. We want to teach them about life and what they are going to have to do to survive in this world. Our coaches are here to be mentors for them, and we want to teach them about doing their work in school, which is important. And if they need help, we provide tutors for the kids in our organization that are willing to help us. We want them to understand that everyone wants to win, but you have to understand how to lose just as well, because we will not win at everything we do. They have to get up and keep pushing and not quit. We're teaching them about obedience, integrity, commitment, dedication, and loyalty. And we also want to keep them off the streets, out of gangs, and off drugs. This is our mission, and with your help and God's help, we can get it done. So in what we do, we try to take the at-risk kids off the streets, providing mentorship and recreation and the tutoring that would help them and affect the opioid crisis in Sanford. And we also try to... I try to keep our organization free. We don't charge any... For the last couple of years, we've been able to keep it free. And we're running out of money. We're living off donations. So that's pretty much it. And if you could do anything for us, we've been in existence for eight years. And like I said before, the last two years, we've been able to keep it free for the kids, the at-risk kids in the projects. And we have a field that the Sanford Housing Authority leased to us, and we just want to... We need a couple of extra dollars to get it fixed up to where we can play on it. That's pretty much it. Thank y'all.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Next individual, I believe, is John Pascal.
Thank you. I'm John Pascal. My home address is 1549 Hall Branch Road, Sanford, 27330. I'm here representing the Bread of Life of Sanford. It's in the old McKeever School on 219 Maple Avenue at the corner of Third and Maple. We operate a food pantry there, and we serve meals. Actually, our building's in use seven days a week. A couple of weeks ago, I delivered a letter to the county manager, Ms. Lisa Minter, about our need for this upcoming extreme weather shelter. We've operated extreme weather shelter in the wintertime since 2017. And we have... And this year, we find ourselves without the funds to do it. And we have the place to do it. We have the staff, the people willing to run the shelter this year. But our funds, our donations have dropped tremendously. And we have... We know that there's going to be people needing shelter when the weather gets cold. Our criteria for opening is when the weather is 35 degrees or below. And last year, when we were operating, we were open 52 days out of the... From November 15th to March 15th. And we housed 50 different males and 20 different females. We served 660 people, 660 meals. We stay open from 8:00 to 8:00 p.m. to 8:00 a.m. at night, and we can house up to 20 people over the age of 18. And so our letter to the county was just asking if we could... If there's any way the county could see to help us financially to pay for our salaries this year. Bread of Life has one salary employee. Everybody else that works at the Bread of Life is a volunteer. And so... But really, just to let you know, our donations are a way down. It's a needed service. The shelters are staying full right now. And so, you know, we know there's going to be more people that need shelter than there are beds available. And so that's what I wanted to let the county know and to let you know about that. Just real briefly, speaking about the ARPA money, the things that y'all got going on tonight, I reviewed it from the minutes. And it sounds like a great idea, and we are glad that you're going to open it up to other nonprofits. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next individual on the list is Laura Spivey.
Good evening. My name's Laura Spivey. I live at 1708 Pendergrass Road. And I'd like to speak on behalf of the Outreach Mission Incorporated's Board of Directors and Staff. The Lee County nonprofits work as partners with the county to provide for human services needs such as shelter, food security, and medical care. These nonprofits depend on donations and grants from many different sources to continue operating annually. In return for all our hard work that we perform, all we expect is a fair and transparent process that allows us to be made aware of funding opportunities in a timely manner, provide a defined set of goals for the funding, and a review process that selects the agency based on its capability and track record. Every grant and donation dollar is spent with the goal of achieving the maximum benefit for our clients. Our financial books are always open to answer any questions that any donors may have. Respect, integrity, transparency, and communication are the key factors that make any partnership work. Hopefully, we can move forward as partners in meeting the needs of the Lee County residents and people that are the most vulnerable. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Next individual on the list is Vonda Reeves.
My name is Vonda Reeves. I live at 2117 Jazzin' Drive, Sanford, North Carolina. And the opioid crisis is a very complicated beast. I don't know a single person in this room who hasn't been affected by it. Maybe a friend or a family member who is struggling with it or even have died from it. If you haven't been affected by it, just keep on living. Tackling this crisis takes a multifaceted approach that takes a whole village. There needs to be high-quality evidence-based programs, treatments, and medication. It should be approached by primary prevention, even by educating our younger population, and taking high-risk kids and providing recreation that is attainable and accessible to them. Also, there should be sponsorship for those who have no insurance. There should be Narcan vending machines. There should be job training programs. It's going to take many organizations in our community to do this. And money should be divided into multiple organizations. Some are already doing the work. And our eggs should not be placed all in one basket. I think that our community has a lot of organizations that have been in this battle a long time. Some of them represented here who have already spoken, and some that are not even here tonight. And I feel that these organizations should be given the opportunity to receive funding equally and not just one organization having a lump sum of money poured into a program that has not been proven. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next individual is Tamara Brogan.
Hi, good evening. I'm Tamara Brogan, 404 Petty Road, Sanford. I'm here tonight as the Executive Director of Family Promise of Lee County, as well as the Chair of S3 Housing Connect. I am here to talk about the Lee County Government's Health and Well-being Initiative. I want to thank you for the consideration of reallocation of funds and giving local nonprofits a chance to apply for the program. This will be a big help to all the agencies in the county that are already doing a lot of great work to help our community and people in need. And I ask and encourage you tonight to move forward with the proposed program that's on the agenda. And to move forward in allowing nonprofits to be able to apply so that they can continue to do their missions here in Lee County. We do work well together in S3. All the agencies here are working hard, and this money will really be a good help for everybody. So thank you for opening up the process to other, to all nonprofits, and allowing them to apply. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I want to say Sandra Thompson, the S's...
You said it correctly.
Okay, I wasn't sure. I'm sorry.
Good afternoon. Good evening. My name is Sandra Thompson. It's so nice to be here. I'm representing Spectrum Recovery, and I am a therapist. I would like to say that we are a very small company here in Sanford. I live at 99 Ravens Nest Lane, Cameron. However, I do work at 201 Commercial Court, Sanford. And as I said before, I am a therapist. We provide an evidence-based program there. We provide MAT, which is Medication Assistant Treatment, Individual and Group Therapy, Case Management, and a lot of love. And we like the population. In fact, we love the population that we work with, and I think that that's the most important thing, that you like the population that you are serving that is in need. What I would like to say is that Spectrum is not a nonprofit. However, we have a proven track record that I would like consideration to be given to us, because we have changed lives in the community since 2017 when we opened. And if we would not have been there, we would probably had lost quite a few friends and family members, of people that are possibly sitting in this room. I really appreciate the opportunity to be able to say that we have a population of clients that have gone through our program that are in North Carolina, peer support right now, that they are working back in the profession. They are giving back. And that is what you call evidence-based, and that is also something that is needed. We need to understand that people that we are serving, sometimes they just don't have the funds. They don't have the means. So we have to represent them. Because we are not a nonprofit, we don't make a whole lot of money. You know, we have to depend on being paid by insurance companies. And anybody knows that there's a war with insurance companies. So there are times that we don't even get paid for doing, providing treatment. But we have not closed our doors to the clients that walk in that's in need. And again, thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you, ma'am. Next individual is Daisy Galena. Did I pronounce that correctly?
Yes. Hi, everyone. My name is Daisy. I must say, I am not prepared. I signed the paper. I just signed the paper as I was coming in. I didn't... I was not prepared. I'm so sorry.
We will need your address, please.
Okay. 2516 Thimmerfield Drive, Sanford.
And spell your last name.
G-A-L-E-A-N-A.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, did you want... I'm sorry, Daisy. You wanted to speak on behalf of... You've still got two minutes and 30 seconds.
I just... So it's for a nonprofit that my friend and I have been... I'm sorry, I'm really nervous. I really was not prepared. But it's for a nonprofit that my friend and I have been working on. We just really want to help. I'm so sorry. I'm so nervous.
And helping what, please?
On helping the children that are at risk if maybe their parents are struggling, and we just want to be able to be counselors for them, guide them, help them with their academics, and provide them with food if they need food, clothing. So I'm so sorry. I just... I'm not prepared right now.
Well, that's okay. That's fine.
Do you remember the name of your...
Yes, sir. It's called Grace is Enough.
Okay. That helps.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. The next item on the agenda is under Old Business, is the Lee County Sponsorship and Naming Rights Policy. And why won't that open?
This was an item that Ben McCarey was going to handle for us tonight, but Ben is out sick, so I'm going to take this and move ahead with it tonight. In your agenda package, we had included a revised sponsorship naming rights policy, along with a brochure that Ben has developed, and a listing of potential funding or cost for different naming rights. You also have a copy of the brochure at your desk so that you can see that and hold it and touch it. So, sorry, he did the proposed pricing sheet for the Library Sports Complex. As you will see on the pamphlet, we are creating a sponsorship campaign with the name of Playing for Tomorrow is what's been proposed. It's creating a campaign of sorts to help create some more urgency and desire to get in now. Some proposed giving levels can be seen there, but those may change as the campaign fully takes shape over the next few months. Obviously, you know, this will be the first time we've done anything like this, so we're setting benchmarks for certain fundings. And if we see that's not working, we may have to come back and make adjustments to those. At the last meeting that this was discussed at, it was recommended that we meet with the Parks and Rec Board and the Library Advisory Boards. Ben did go to both of those meetings and take the policy to them, and has made some changes based on some comments that we received there. The required gift for each amenity is based on similar campaigns in North Carolina, and were also adjusted based on the Parks and Library Board's recommendations. Both boards feel that these gift levels are competitive and fair. And then they've also asking that commissioners allow the county manager to add additional amenities to this offering if necessary, because right now we don't have any trails listed. So with the potential, now that we'll have the walking trail out at the new multi-sports complex, we may want to add that on a later date. And also, the naming rights is only offered for premier amenities, and they are outlined on the sheet in your agenda package in the top section. Those would be 10-year contracts for the naming rights, and we're proposing that you consider five-year contracts for all the amenity sponsorships. And we will be making updates to you on a regular basis as to how this program goes if you do decide to approve it tonight. I'll be glad to answer any questions or try to answer any questions.
Questions for the manager. Commissioner Sharp.
Are we prepared to take money, ma'am?
We can, yes, sir.
I figured we would be, but I...
We still may have to fine-tune the contracts a little bit, but we can work it out pretty quick.
Thank you.
Commissioner Reeves.
Do we have enough for handouts tonight?
I did not print enough to hand out tonight, so we wanted to make sure you approved it before we printed a bunch of them.
That's good with me.
Thank you.
Commissioner Warbeck.
No questions.
Commissioner Connect.
Thank you.
Commissioner Lovick.
No questions.
Commissioner Carver.
No, I'm thankful for the work that Ben's done, even though he's not here tonight.
Yeah.
He's done an outstanding job on the brochure and everything else.
County Barrister. Assistant County Barrister. Okay?
Move to approve.
Have a motion to approve the final version and adopt the proposed sponsorship and naming rights policy as presented. Is there any further discussion? Seeing there is none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you very much. And we will be moving ahead with getting our proposals out on the website now to accept proposed names for the park, now that we can post the rules.
Next item on the agenda is the participation in the Central Pines Regional Council Grant Assistance Program. And this has been Commissioner Carver requested that the staff explore the grant assistance program offered by Central Pines. And any discussion, Commissioner Carver?
Well, I know that the county manager has done a whale of a lot of work since we talked about this the first time. I believe it was Commissioner Sharp that recommended we look at some others, other counties or other people that have participated. And reviewing the reports, I think they're overwhelmingly positive. I think the... If I understand correctly, the county manager has one reservation, which has to do with the capability that we have to actually execute on this because of the work that we're doing right now. However, I would like to suggest that there is room in the program to allow a significant increase in amount of money that goes to the... Goes to Central Pines Regional Council, the grant people that are actually doing it. In other words, it can become part of what we're asking for. The last thing that's significant to my way of thinking is that if you look at all the participants in the 47 entities that are involved in Central Pines, the particular effort here at Central Pines is financed at about $300,000, which is a lot of money. They reported a return of $7 million that have already... Grants that have been approved. And at the last board meeting that I attended last week, an additional grant of $4 million was just recovered. So we have a total of $11 million compared to $300,000 invested. That gives a lot of potential. It doesn't mean that we automatically get it. I understand. We have to put in our reasonable amount of work on our end. I just think in terms of being able to look at something that has been so successful and participate in it, it's worth a go for one particular year. And actually, as I understand, Central Pines is willing to discount our involvement this year. In other words, since we are starting late. So I suggest that maybe it might be worth our while to jump in. I actually want to say one more thing. One of the things the county manager had the insight to ask was give us an idea of counties across North Carolina that are involved. I believe it's North Carolina. And you see a number of people, I think they looked at actually 30 counties. And I think 50% of them actually are involved in such a program. For example, they have hired somebody on their staff to be a development coordinator. I think that what that reflects is that there's an awful lot of funds out there that if we simply raise our hand and say we're interested in getting them and put the work in that's necessary to ask, we could be receiving it. And so, good track record, good opportunity. I think it's a reasonable risk to invest $20,000 in it. Thank you.
Commissioner Lovick.
My comment is, from what I've read on this, the only... We have a couple of concerns I've had. It states in part of the findings that we only currently have Durham County in our program that has substantially worked with the sheriff's office during that part. One of the other states was, based on additional information received and research done, do feel that the grant assistance program could be valuable resource to the county. However, still concerned that the county does not have the staff available to devote to the program. That's my biggest concern. If we funded this and got grants, we don't have the proper people to administer those funds. And so they're suggesting, what I see here, is talking about that we need a grant administrator position as well as participate in the program. So we need to, in my opinion, be looking into that part of it.
Okay. Commissioner Connect.
Good, thanks.
Commissioner Warbeck.
I just... Cameron, did you get your questions answered that you know of?
Well, I didn't get them until I was reading, you know, almost I read the material.
Okay, okay. So that is one of my concerns, would be the grant administrator position. Though the return on investment versus what we could spend in, I do believe is a really good return. However, in the grant course that we took a couple of weeks ago, there are... There's funds out there, and we already have, I know, two departments that work really hard at getting grants, the sheriff's office and Parks and Rec. I think in order to be set up for the best movement with this is, I'm not necessarily a no-for going with it. I'm just pausing. Can we put a grant applicator or application out, get us set up, have a good foundation to move forward with, and then get this approved on the next fiscal policy and be able to kind of start off in a good position, and maybe gain insight from the Sheriff Department and Joseph at Parks and Rec, and see what their process looks like, and try and get us into a thing to... That we're standing on a firm foundation with both feet to be able to move forward instead of kind of on our heels. I think it's a good... I mean, the stuff that they have brought in here and where it's working, I just think that would give us a good idea on what grants we're looking for, what we need to go after, and taking even some of our bigger, long-term projects into account. Are there things that we can go and attack then? And kind of have that person, if we can find someone, ready to go, they've got this wealth of knowledge. It does seem with some of the work that they have done that I did have a reservation that Central Pines doesn't necessarily help us once we get the grant or once the grant process is in or application is in. But... But reading her review and stuff, it does seem like they do help us a little bit more. So, that reservation is kind of squashed, but I just, I do worry that we're not quite ready to take on even if we do get it. That's the only thing.
Can I ask if you're offering an amendment, Ben?
I am, I actually, I have my notes. I was gonna make an amendment, make a motion to hold till next fiscal year and if we could start the process now on possibly getting, someone can work on maybe like a job application summary on what we could look at, get an idea. I know they kind of, the salary range went around, but at least trying to figure out what that job responsibilities and duties looks like, getting some input from, two of our departments are already kind of doing it and putting it on for our December discussion and looking for a hire, so.
And there hasn't been a motion paid yet tonight on that, so...
Oh, yeah.
Just that way, there needs to be amendment.
No amendment to an emotion. Would you like to make that a motion?
Yes, I would like to make that a motion.
So, as I understand, the grant, your motion is to hold until the next fiscal year, open a position for a grant administration, administrator and bring it forward during our December discussion, during our budget retreat.
Yes, sir.
She's shaking her head yes. Commissioner Reeves, comments, questions?
Do you know if any of the other counties reference Durham and Durham, Durham City, Durham County, they all have grant administrators right now? Or do you know?
I don't know on your list what they have in.
Durham was not listed on this.
They were not listed because they were part of the Pines Council. These were ones outside that. Durham does have grant administrators and so does the city of Durham.
What could you do with $20,000 right now as it relates to grants?
As it relates to grants? Not a lot right now. I mean, it's gonna take more than that to hire a position.
Sure.
And I want to give credit, I'm not gonna take credit for work I did not do. Suzie, our fellow in finance, did most of the research for me on this. I want to make sure I recognize her for that work and don't take credit for it. But, you know, part of what we have her doing is trying to develop a program, a way for us to manage the grants we currently have.
Right.
And hopefully, we can take that and keep those managed. But if we're going to grow and go after more grants, and I also want to recognize the health department also goes after a lot of grants, so we would include them in our discussion as your motion is mentioned. You know, so the 20,000, yes, it opens a door for us, but right now with the staffing we have and the work they have on them, I don't know that they can make effective use of the program, because there's still a database that we will have to go search and look at grants for. And I don't know that all the departments or very many of our departments have the staff that take that time to look. So, I'm afraid that it's gonna be a database that sits there and we may have two or three departments who go and make use of it. Where if we have somebody that's dedicated to this, they can go and research that database and then reach out to the departments and help guide them. Because a lot of our departments do not have grant writers and stuff. And then there's, can be more research done on the grants as to the long-term cost of the grants. So, we may get a grant for a piece of equipment, but then as we start working through it, we find out there's a large maintenance cost to that piece of equipment that the grant does not cover and then you have an ongoing cost. I want to make sure that we're as transparent as we can be when the department comes to you and asks you to approve a grant application, that you know what your future costs are gonna be outside that grant. And I just don't feel like we have the staffing right now to be able to do that as good as what we should be doing it.
Okay. One other question to your motion. Are you gonna do that simultaneously or are you gonna phase it in? Hiring a grant administrator and contracting with these folks same time?
Same time, if not possibly, I mean, my utopia world would like to get them on staff prior to even going with, because I believe it starts in July, correct? Would be the next...
It's each fiscal year. Now, my understanding was you just wanted us to bring in December a proposed job description?
Mm-hmm.
And then y'all would make the decision as to whether or not, is that the way I understood your motion?
If we can get it started, yes. And then I would, to continue answering your question, is for them to at least start by second quarter, opening it up.
Well, that's what we're trying to figure out, what we're talking about.
Yep, yep, yep. Getting them start second quarter, getting them acclimated to how, what our needs are and stuff, instead of them like, okay, here, start, learn us, and then also here's this, you know, thing that I need you to go look at as well. So, yeah.
Based on what she just explained, that, that 20,000 could be going towards to pay that person for one quarter of this fiscal year prior to, so they'd be on the, on our payroll and ready to roll.
Mm-hmm.
So, we could take that 20,000 and pay for that potentially. May not cover the whole quarter, but would help.
It gets the game going.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Commissioner Sharp.
Yeah, I just, I just say that we move it to our retreat and talk about it further. And I agree with what the county manager's saying as well. The 20,000 could be going toward the salary of the administrator, grant administrator.
So, as I have the motion and if you would, Madam Clerk, would you read it?
Point of order. I, I kind of appreciate what we're doing and the way we're trying to develop this. Is there a motion on the floor that relates to the, the agenda item or not? Was that the previous, was that the previous motion?
What I wrote down is, hold till next fiscal year, open a position for grant administrator and during our December budget discussion, plan on moving forward with...
We're calling it an amendment. What's an amendment to?
No, it was, it was a motion. She made a motion.
It's just a motion. I got it.
Because I don't believe anyone made a motion to start.
There was no motion to amend.
Thank you. Makes sense.
Is that clear?
So, what we had is to hold the participation in the Central Pines Regional Council Grant Assistance Program until next fiscal year and propose the grant administrator position to be discussed at the December board retreat.
Good?
Do we, yes. Do we need that?
Okay.
Yeah.
Any, any further discussion? You've heard the motion.
The only thing that I'd like reflected in the minutes is the motivation for this motion includes some sort of corporate memory into why we were here in the first place. So, as part of the discussion that in fact, we were, we were discussing the Central Pines Regional Council Grant Assistance Program. And if you put that in there, then when we go back and look at why we tried to enter into that, that was one of the opportunities that this new person would, would be able to do. I don't think that affects the amendment, that's just a request.
Did you get that, Madam Clerk? Any further discussion? All those in favor of holding until the next fiscal year, but work on an open position for grant administrator to discuss at our December retreat. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Moving on, new business? Under new business, the ARPA update?
Hi, Jen.
Hello. So, I'm the lucky one that gets to represent the ARPA grant. I'm here to present to you kind of where we stand. You have two reports in front of you. It was provided in the agenda packet. The first one that I'm gonna go over is the one that has the county logo at the top. This kind of gives us an overview of where we stand federally speaking. I kind of want to clarify what the colorful side on the, on the left side represents. ARP is kind of broken into different categories, okay? Lee County was authorized four of those five categories and so, we're looking at like the grant administration piece, which is in blue. The premium pay is in green. The negative economic impact is in purple and the revenue loss is in orange. And so, when you look at the top with the cash total, the county was awarded $11,999,847. And of that, $10 million was appropriated towards the revenue loss as given permission by the treasury to put that into the revenue loss regardless if the, the local government realized the loss or not. We then broke it down into, $2 million went to broadband and $8 million went to government provision, which ended up being salaries, which then kind of spills into the MB squared money, which is maximize the benefit, minimize the burden. Sometimes I get that backwards. So, that will be represented in the second report. So, I'm going back to the top. So, we, we just cleared just shy of $12 million. Right now, we have appropriated the full amount. We have fully spent $9,393,453.09 with a total remaining of $2,606,393.91. And does anybody have any questions so far?
Questions for Jen? Commissioner Sharp?
No.
Commissioner Reeves?
Right now.
Commissioner Borbeck?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Connect? Commissioner Lovick?
No, thank you.
Commissioner Carver?
I'm good, thank you.
Okay.
Okay. If you'll go to the second report, which is the more colorful one, there's three different boxes. So, we have in yellow, the previously approved projects that the boards had listed and ranked and then agreed on, which totals a $5,936,000. Of that, we have expended $1,475,679.06 with a remaining of $4,448,469.92. In the orange little box down here is the mental health initiative, which the board approved one point, just a little over $1.5 million. And in the little gray box is the remaining proposed options that you guys can review if you want to put money towards. I just want to keep in mind, or let you know that the estimated cost doesn't necessarily mean that it's the full cost of that project. We'd have to dig in a little bit deeper to see what that full total would be. So, to kind of like summarize what this chaos of a graph is, we started with $8 million, which is represented by that first page of the salaries, which is the MB squared piece. Once you remove the yellow box and the orange box, we have a total of $525,626.02. And that can be up to you all to decide what you would like to put it towards if you don't want to go towards the gray box. I did want to identify that there is a re-obligation column and that is some of the projects we, was decided not to roll over those funds. And so, they were essentially removed, but potentially are just kind of hanging out there until we can identify what to do or where to go from there. And all of the remaining cost, these projects are still active. We're still waiting on some of the final like invoices to come through to make sure it's completely before we liquidate.
What exactly are those costs you're referring to? Because I'm looking at what's expended.
Mm-hmm.
Were we talking about the gray box and the estimated?
I'm sorry. The remaining column on all of them. So, even on the first page, there's a remaining balance. I just want to make sure that you guys are aware that that's still active projects. So, for instance, the, well, let's see here, the Temple Park, we've expended some funds, but the project's still open because there's still active things that are happening with that. So, we haven't fully liquidated or closed out that project, so it's not open for re-obligation.
That looks like the $2 million that you see up at the very top there for the Board of Commissioners chambers, that is part of the library project?
Yes.
So, we've not actually spent that money yet, but it's still obligated.
Yep.
It's not up for re-obligation. And we're actually not gonna ask you tonight unless you have a particular thing you want to fund, that you're re-obligating this tonight. We still have some projects that are coming up. You're gonna talk about cameras at the jail here shortly and there's some other things that are happening at the jail that we may need to come and ask you to take some of what's available in that gray box down there and re-obligate to some other projects since you've not committed those funds yet, or we may come back to you and ask you to commit it to mental health or whatever else y'all might want to consider.
Do I have a motion to approve the staff recommendations for the MB2 funds?
There, actually, we don't need any.
Don't need a motion to approve the staff recommendations?
No.
Okay.
Because we're not actually making them at this point. Sorry, we changed it.
Do you have any questions for me to explain anything?
I've got a question, but it relates to the library project on the Board of Commissioners chambers. Are we pretty certain that $2 million is enough? Or do we have a...
The cost, the last cost estimate they gave you had the library, the Board of Commissioners chambers costing a little bit more than $2 million, but you upped the funding for the project from another source.
Okay.
Any other questions?
I'd like to know where we are on the ending date. There were different ending dates, so when do we have to have the money obligated?
Fully obligated by December 31 of '24, fully spent by December 31 of '26.
That does not apply, though, to the MB squared money?
Not to the MB squared money, no, no, sir.
Okay, so you have to remember with the revenue loss change that this federal government made, we have been spending that $8 million that came under the revenue loss under salaries, which freed up other money that you now can spend and there's no obliga, no deadline of when that has to be spent.
That's brilliant.
Yeah. So, to kind of, that's why I kind of broke it up into two separate reports. So, the first report is, is more of a defined December 31, '24 obligatory piece, which is that top part, because technically, the revenue loss will have fully spent. In fact, the salaries are almost fully spent. We only, will be done by mid-December with the salaries. I'm anticipating any day now for the great grant to start invoicing us and hopefully, the CAB program will pick up pretty quickly and I speculate that will happen pretty fast.
Okay, thank you.
No problem.
Any other questions? Thank you, Jen Waterhouse.
No problem.
Next item on the agenda is Lee County Government's Health and Well-being Initiative and I believe Assistant Manager Angelina Noel.
Good evening, commissioners. It's my pleasure to come before you this evening to present you with Lee County's first Health and Well-being Initiative as a part of the Lee County Government's new renew initiative. So, just for historical purposes and a reminder to the board, in November of 2022, the Board of Commissioners approved and allocated $500,000 of ARPA funds to the Dream Center to help fund their mental health initiatives. After that meeting, Pastor Dale Salz approached the Lee County staff with an idea to allow other nonprofits an opportunity to access this funding. So, out of these meetings, Lee County staff and the manager would like to present to you a proposal before you tonight. This proposal will reallocate $250,000 of the original $500,000 to the Lee County Health and Well-being Initiative. This $250,000 will be open to all nonprofits serving Lee County residents based on our approved list of services. And that approved list of services is a part of your agenda packet. All, a list of these services are available to you. And just to give you some examples of what's on that list, not all-inclusive, but we have, for example, services and treatment for licensed clinical social workers, licensed clinical mental health counselors, psychologists, psychiatrists, licensed clinical addiction specialists, like CCCC job training programs, temporary housing up to five days max, MAT, medication for assisted treatment for up to three months, payment for treatment programs, childcare for individuals up to two weeks to a licensed provider, and there's a multitude of other reimbursable expenses that are on that approved list. And so, with that, the remaining $250,000 will be allocated for contracted services to be paid directly to providers within Lee County providing mental health services to our residents. So, staff through the community social worker will use the same list of approved services, but contract directly with mental health providers and pay them directly for that service. And just to kind of give you an example that we had kind of discussed, DSS, for example, if we take a child, the way Medicaid policy currently is, not prior to expansion coming onboard, if we remove a child from, from a parent's custody, if they have no children in the home, they automatically lose Medicaid eligibility. And so, through the court process, the first thing that's gonna happen when a judge, when this case goes to court, is a judge is going to require a mental health assessment to be completed. And so, it really limits that individual on who will provide that mental health assessment in that they typically don't have health insurance that covers that because they've lost Medicaid eligibility. Now, that will change when, with Medicaid expansion, but right now, that's just an example of how we could use that. how we could use that contracted services with, if we are contracting directly with a contracted provider in town, that we could pay for that assessment and that follow-up treatment recommendation directly through that $250,000. Also available in your board packet is an application to apply for funding from the Lee County Health and Well-being Initiative for nonprofits. This application, if approved tonight, will be posted on our county's website. In addition, the county will be providing an informational session that all current nonprofits that can attend, so everybody's in the audience. This information session is going to take place on the conference, in the conference room of the Buggy Building on October 6th at 3:00 PM. That will allow us to kind of go over an overview of the program, the list of services, the contract that the legal team composed for, to enter in with the nonprofits, which is also available in your packet tonight. And this program will operate through our Lee County pretrial and reentry program as well as our new community social worker. So at this time, and I'm hoping this works, if not, Colin's going to have to get it up and running, I would like to introduce our new Renew program. And you will see this as a common theme moving forward as it relates to addressing mental health and behavioral health needs within our community. Renew will be tied in to our county's opioid strategic plan, and it really helps us with this initiative to work towards creating a community that provides physical and mental health and well-being in our community as outlined by our Lee County strategic plan. So what does Renew stand for? It's Resources for Eliminating Barriers, Creating New Beginnings, and Providing Education for an Enhanced Well-Being. And so at this time, I'm really excited to turn it over to Ms. Autumn Smith, who will be introducing her very talented team to the board.
I've got a question before you sit down.
Questions.
On this list of services, is all this easily accessed on the website, or it, once it's passed?
It will, it will be. It's on the board agenda. It's attached on the board agenda, so if individuals can go through the county website now, it's attached to the board agenda. But we will, if it's approved tonight, the plan is on posting it on the website, the application, the list of services, so that individuals can go on the website and directly review that list of service. And then we would plan on putting this information in a press release as well, if approved by the board.
Right.
And then myself would be the contact information if providers have questions or if nonprofits have questions, they can reach out directly to me.
Okay, and the meeting down at the Buggy Factory on, what is that, Chatham Street, is what date?
It's going to be October 6th, which is this Friday at 3:00 PM.
3:00 PM.
Yes, sir. And it's, it's, it's in the conference room. It's actually on the first floor, but it looks like the second floor.
Right.
Because you come in at the ground level. So if you kind of glance up, it's right there just for the public, because that gets a little confusing.
Thank you.
Questions, Commissioner Sharp?
No, I don't.
Questions, Commissioner Vorbeck of Ms. Noel?
Well, we have a chance to ask after.
We'll grab her while she's up there right now.
Okay. She can, she's planning on coming back up after.
Okay, she's planning to come in. Anybody have a pressing question for, okay, Ms. Noel, thank you. All right, Autumn, hold your questions until everybody's done.
Good evening, Commissioners. I would like to take a few minutes to introduce pretrial services and our new positions since the program has expanded. My name is Autumn Smith, and I'm the Pretrial Services Coordinator. A brief history on pretrial services, it was established with Lee County Government in 2005. The program is housed in the Lee County Courthouse and works with the courts and the inmates to screen and identify individuals who would benefit from various treatments, educational opportunities, or mental health services. These services are court-ordered through a judge and are monitored for compliance. The selection process is structured and rigorous, operating within the construct of the courtroom. However, in recent years, resource gaps have become more identifiable. In an effort to reduce recidivism and assist the community beyond the walls of the courthouse, the pretrial program added a second position, the Judicial Service Coordinator. It is my privilege to introduce Ms. Christie Brayboy. Ms. Brayboy retired from the Department of Public Safety as a prison warden with 27 and a half years of experience. She served six and a half of those years as a prison warden at Hoke and Richmond Correctional Institutions, one of which is a designated reentry facility. During her time with DPS, she worked not only in prisons, but in probation, parole, and with juvenile justice. She is a graduate of Sandhills Community College in Western Carolina. In her current role, she is passionate about reentry and working with the justice-involved individuals and their families as they transition from jail into the community. Since beginning in November of 2022, she has prioritized connecting with nonprofits and community resources to assist her clients with success after release. Reentry can be difficult for the justice-involved, and Ms. Brayboy is an incredible advocate. As pretrial continued providing services to an even larger group, we found another missing piece, which was the coordination of mental health services. This past spring, the community social worker position was formed and approved by this board. This is a valuable resource to aid in bridging gaps and coordinating resources within the mental health community for any Lee County resident. Starting tomorrow, pretrial services will consist of three positions, and we welcome Stephen Money. Mr. Money is a graduate of Elon University and holds a master's degree from UNCG and ANT. He specialized in family and children's services while there. He has worked in various social work positions with DSS, also in the Lee County School System's Exceptional Children Program, and performed in-home intensive treatments. He has spent the last six years as a magistrate in Lee County. Mr. Money has vast experience in the Lee County community, working with families on conflict resolution, substance abuse treatment, the involuntary commitment process, and in his role as magistrate, has performed approximately 700 marriages. He is well-known in the Lee County community. In closing, I'd like to thank the Commissioners and county staff for supporting Lee County pretrial services. We have a talented and passionate team, and we look forward to reaching out and working with all the residents of Lee County.
Thank you. So now the board understands why I asked Ms. Smith to come in and introduce her staff. We're very fortunate to have both Ms. Brayboy and Mr. Money as part of this, this new initiative. And I have to give credit to Ben, who is not here this afternoon, or this evening, because he is extremely talented. So he takes my thoughts and all the information that I just spill at him really, really quickly, and he, he visualizes it for me. And so a lot of this is between Haley, our clerk to the board, and Ben, in creating this logo that we're going to brand moving forward on our mental health and behavioral health initiatives in working through this Renew program. And one thing, as I was sitting there, I failed to mention to the board, is also attached to your agenda tonight is also a criteria checklist. And that criteria checklist is for nonprofits to kind of look at, so the board understands what we're looking for when we evaluate if a nonprofit can meet these services. And so the plan is, is that once we get the applications and they meet that, those criteria, that we would be presenting just the list of those that meet the criteria to the board on the November 20th meeting.
One thing I wanted to explain to, make sure it's clear, that this is a reimbursement program. It's not an application where, like our normal nonprofit application has been in the past, where a nonprofit can come in and ask for $30,000 to run a program. They would be signing up to participate in this reimbursement program to provide these specific services for a specific clientele. And also, I don't want to mislead anybody. We have a lot of nonprofits here tonight, so I want to make sure it's clear what this program is, so it's not coming in asking for, you know, $20,000 to be allocated over a year. You have to be providing the specific services that are listed in here and asking for reimbursement of those services to participate. So I just want to make sure that that's...
And not grants?
Right, it's not a grant. It is, you're providing a service, and we will reimburse you for that service.
Why don't you qualify?
Correct, thank you.
Any other questions moving on here? Commissioner Carver?
I just wanted to observe that we had a number of comments this morning, or this evening, that related to a lot of what we're doing. And I think with the exception possibly of taking care of somebody who has a business like Sandra does that is not a nonprofit, she wouldn't be eligible for this. But a lot of the comments that you made tonight are being realized in this program, which is very encouraging, this is to me, I think. We had a concern originally, and we originally asked for a licensed social worker, and we stepped back because we couldn't find one for the money we were willing to pay, and we went ahead and went with the community social worker, which I think is brilliant, that gives us that person, and this money I know has a great reputation, he'll be a good asset. What I'm curious about is the second $250,000. If we needed therapeutic intervention, do you think that that'd be possible to use that second $250,000 to get the services that we needed from the more qualified person?
So I think that's a great question, and I think where Ms. Thompson comes in play with working directly with Spectrum Recovery is, we can, we would do contracted services to pay directly for those mental health providers that are already paying if that individual doesn't have another funding source. So if they lack health insurance coverage, or they just don't have a funding source that pays for that, that contracted services through our community social worker could, we could enter into a contract and pay directly to the mental health provider with the other set of the $250,000.
And in the long run, we're really getting what we originally wanted, are we not, with the therapeutic care that we now have, can access, even though he's a community social worker? Is that true?
Correct, and so, so Mr. Money has a master's in social work, which allows him to have that education, but without that clinical license, they can't do a formal assessment and provide a treatment plan. Now, do they assess? Absolutely. Do they provide a recommendation and a plan moving forward? Absolutely. But where other mental health providers could step in is that contracted services. That's correct.
Good, thank you.
Commissioner Lovick?
Just a comment. I'm proud of our county for not giving up on folks. Some people will look at the money we're spending, your county tax dollars, and say, "Why?" But I see it as a county, we're not giving up on our people. All of us, as one lady mentioned about, everybody's in fact impacted by opioids and mental health. And I see from this staff that we're gaining as a county as a plus, that we're not giving up as mental health or opioids or the reentry after they've been incarcerated. So I just want to say I'm proud of our county for this, and our great staff that we got that's going to help other folks out, and I think it affects all of our lives in some parts, so I'm proud of that. Thank you.
Commissioner Connect?
Good, thank you.
Commissioner Vorbeck?
I just had a question on that, was trying to pull it back up. Not that, sorry. The application qualification checklist, I know on there it says an organization is more than one year old. Anyone who's under the one-year mark could still apply? Or are we...
As of right now, we have that checklist as must meet all those criteria.
Must meet all? Okay. Okay. Anything?
You're good?
Sure.
Commissioner Reeves, questions?
No questions, just a motion to approve.
Motion's been made to approve the reallocation of the amount of $500,000 in ARPA MB2 money from the Dream Center to the Lee County Government's Health and Well-being Initiative with $250,000 for nonprofit reimbursable services and $250,000 for contracted services. Questions for Commissioner Sharp?
Not a question, but I just wanted to comment on the pretrial staff, Autumn, Christie, and Mr., Stephen. You guys couldn't have picked any three better people to run that thing. I've worked with Christie in probation parole, worked with Autumn in probation parole, and worked in the court family with Stephen Money, and I just want to say, with Mr. Money and Christie, both of them were so professional, even when I wasn't.
Oh, no.
They were. And I'm going to give them credit for that.
You complete the fair.
And we did a good job.
You must have been bad.
I have been, I knew it. But no, we did a good job on that thing.
Thank you. And I would like to add, we, I'm trying to remember who all went to Durham when we visited their facility. I want to say Jennifer, Autumn. This is a continuation of that process that we're adopting here in Lee County, so I do want to commend. And welcome to Christie Braybauer? Is it Brayboy?
Brayboy.
And Stephen Money? Glad to have you. Thank you very much. Well, without further, we have a motion. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next item on the agenda is the jail cameras discussion. And we'll pass it on to Lisa.
Okay.
Do you know they got Assistant County Manager under contact person?
Oh, I didn't catch that.
We'll make sure we fix that.
It's just me as Assistant County Manager.
It's on the...
It must be on the drop-down list.
It's on the abstract.
Drop-down list, so we'll check that.
It's on the abstract.
So, yes, the jail cameras, Commissioner Vorbeck had asked us to bring this to you tonight. During the sheriff's budget presentation to the board in May of 2023, the sheriff mentioned the need for cameras to be upgraded in the jail. At the time, he had not put the request in his requested budget because he felt that it would be addressed in the jail feasibility study. However, due to staff turnover, the feasibility study has taken longer than expected to get started, and based on recent incidents in the jail, Commissioner Vorbeck would like for the board to consider the upgrade of the jail's camera system. We, based on the quote that the sheriff got back in March, the cost was going to be approximately If you want to move ahead with this, I would say that you need to instruct the sheriff to get an updated bid and to bring that back to you at your next meeting, if he can get it that quickly, which I feel like he probably can, depending on what the board's decision is.
Did you get those instructions, Sheriff Estes?
Oh, there they are, I'm sorry. I see them out there.
Come on up, Sheriff, please. Good evening, sir.
Sorry, I didn't mean to steal your thunder.
I just wanted to say thank you for approving the feasibility study for the jail. It, I echo what Commissioner Sharp said. It wasn't no one's fault in this room, but I feel like the jail's been forgotten about for a long time, and so I thank y'all for doing that. But I'm here to answer any questions with the cameras. I've got some information that...
Commissioner Sheriff, questions for the sheriff?
Not this time.
Commissioner Reeves?
What's your maintenance schedule on the cameras?
So the maintenance issues that we've had, so we do pay a maintenance fee every year, but the problems we've ran into, we can't replace some of the cameras because the system that it's operated under wouldn't support the newer cameras. So when we do have a problem, basically they just reset our server, or it's happened so much that actually taught the staff how to do it. So they would go downstairs and reset the server. And so without replacing, so just say we had 10 cameras that didn't work at all, we couldn't replace those 10 cameras without replacing the server and the operating software. So we can't just replace certain ones.
Are you going to be able to do it differently this time?
Yes, sir, because these would be IP cameras. And that, the cameras that are there were put in in 2012.
Yeah.
And so I don't know what type of schedule that cameras are supposed to be replaced on. I would think every 10 years probably with new technology and... I would think every 10 years probably with new technology and.
Because I was thinking about like a cellphone. Just thinking about the cellphones we had in 2012 compared to what we have now. And one of the issues with the cameras that do work, if we zoom in at all, it's so pixelated you can't see anything. You couldn't even identify a person in the, in the video.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Vorbeck?
No questions at the time.
Commissioner Connect?
No, I'm gonna, we just have to, do we have to have a motion asked to, or just ask to get an updated?
I think you can just tell him to get an updated.
Okay. So I think we're just asking for an updated contract, so that's not good for, sir.
Commissioner Lovick, questions?
So where the assault occurred, the last one? Are the inmates finding out where cameras are not working or something? Or?
Real quick.
Yeah, so there's several.
You know what I'm saying?
Yeah, the way the building was designed, there's several blind spots, and we would have to spend a lot more money than that to cover every single blind spot in there. The last assault that occurred, there was a camera there that should have been working, but it wasn't. It recorded it, but it didn't transmit it live. And so the, the officer that sits in the control booth that monitors the cameras didn't see it. And so we were able to go back and watch it, but until one of the inmates basically asked for help for the officer, we didn't know what was going on. So that's a big safety thing. And before the, you know, and thankfully, in the next two weeks, they're gonna start replacing the jail locks. That was the biggest safety concern, and thank y'all for, for getting that moving so fast. And then the cameras was the second safety concern up there. But there are several blind spots, and the inmates know exactly where they are.
So with the new camera system, the 200-some-thousand, would that get us covered on all the?
It would. So some of the cameras that we would have, we would actually be able to move them instead of it just being a fixed camera. So like if, if I needed to zoom over, I could see into a corner with it instead of it just being one fixed area that you see.
So is it possible for that to be a motion camera? In other words, if it, say it was fixed somewhere else, but there is another blind spot, is it possible when they see motion for that camera to automatically, instead of, you know, if it's a blind spot, the control guy couldn't?
I don't think so. It would, I don't know. It would just have to be.
So even when you need cameras, we're still gonna have blind?
There's still gonna be blind spots in that current jail. Like I said, the way that jail was designed, I was told the guy'd never build a jail that built it, and I, I agree. It's just poorly designed for monitoring.
Commissioner, Commissioner Carver?
No, no comments. Thank you.
Okay. You have your instructions, Sheriff. Get us a good bid.
I will.
Up to date. Rush order.
That's it.
Have it here before the next board meeting.
Will do. Thank y'all.
Give it to the manager.
Okay.
Thank you, sir. And be safe. Next item on the agenda is the August 2023 financial reports. She wore out my hand this morning signing all those documents.
Good evening. The August 2023 monthly financial report is attached for your review. The ad valorem tax collections are at 11.61% of budget. The target, targeted percentage used for expenditures for this period is 16.67%. Due to the inclusion of encumbrances, several departments are over this target. However, if encumbrances are removed, no departments are over budget.
Questions for Candace? Commissioner Sharp?
Uh, no, not at this time. But I will be coming to visit you guys soon.
Okay, sounds good. We did recently move from the Summit Building to the Buggy Building, the third floor, so please come visit.
Commissioner Reeves?
No.
Commissioner Vorbeck?
No, sir.
Commissioner Connect?
Thank you.
Commissioner Lovick?
None, thank you.
Commissioner Carver?
No questions.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. All right. Next item on the agenda is Commissioner comments, and then we will go into closed session. So go ahead and start with Commissioner Carver.
I just want to make an observation about one thing we did tonight, which is the, uh, the Health and Wellbeing Initiative. I remember back when we originally discussed this, that Commissioner Reeves properly said, wait a minute, maybe we're going too fast. And that put us into a position where we did a lot of study and looked at this whole process. And it's remarkable where that sense of caution got us. Because I think the program that has been proposed tonight is absolutely amazing and solves a lot of our problems. So I, I appreciate your sense of caution. The other comment that I'd like to make is I'd like to observe or talk a little bit about the General Assembly and what they have just done with teachers. I think it's Speaker Tim Moore essentially said, gee whiz, gosh, golly, I'm sorry, we couldn't do better for the teachers. The end result is a average 7% pay increase over two years. That's 3.5%. All of us know that we're dealing with 7% inflation, which is difficult, shall we say. The one good issue, I think, in what was done by the General Assembly, particularly good, is that they significantly increased the acquisition, the initial first-year pay. Increased it by $4,000. And that was one of the things our school board said was really important to do, is to pay attention to those new people. So I appreciate that. The sense of caution that I have is that I think we made our decision based on a sense of reservation that we wanted to see what the General Assembly was gonna do. Now that we have that answer, I think we really need to reconsider and remember what happened. And when we get back to our retreat and we start talking about teachers again, it might be appropriate to rethink. As we compare what we're doing in general, rightfully so for all the employees, I think, in, in the county, we have to also be concerned about the, the teacher situation. I would acknowledge that we're not the primary source of income or money for teacher salaries. I understand that. But it gives us an opportunity to maybe improve the situation, along with some, maybe some recommendations that we might make to the General Assembly, saying that we don't appreciate the burden. But anyway, speaking up for the teachers. That's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Lovick?
Uh, thank you for all that came out tonight. Voice of opinion, I always appreciate that part. Thanks to the hard work of the staff, that several presentations were made, and Ben went here tonight to get his accolades, but thank you for all the work that each one of you do. National Night Out tomorrow night, tomorrow afternoon. Encourage you to get out to you. And get out, turn your lights on, and go socialize with your neighbors at different events. And downtown Sanford's having theirs a week from this Saturday. So recommend getting out, things going on in Sanford. Thank you.
Commissioner Connect?
I'm good, thank you.
Commissioner Vorbeck?
No comment.
Commissioner Reeves?
This board has done some really good work this evening. And I thank all the staff for the hard work you've done to make it happen. Thank you so very much for the team you have, Autumn. I look for better things. Where'd the sheriff go?
He walked.
Down to his jail. So, thank you.
Commissioner Sharp?
Yeah, I'm, I'm just glad that we were able to come to a quick consensus on the jail cameras. And thank Commissioner Vorbeck for bringing that to the forefront.
I do want to recognize that Councilwoman Rhodes was here. Normally, no one from the city shows up, and I appreciate her being here. I'm sorry she's not here to hear the accolades, but on that note, tomorrow, the city council will be meeting at 1:00. So if you're planning on attending, don't show up at 5:00. They're gonna meet at 1:00. And that was because tomorrow night is also National Night Out. So get out into your community and visit. The October 6th, Friday, 3:00 PM, we have that date now, and it's at the Buggy Factory. Please, all the nonprofits and all our community groups that are going to participate hopefully will attend.
Chairman Smith? Quick question on that.
Yes.
Will that be recorded for if anyone misses it?
I don't, I know, but I believe Ms. Knowles is making a PowerPoint presentation.
Okay.
That way, if someone can't attend, we can provide that information.
Awesome. Okay, all right.
Good question. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Attended yesterday the Disabled Veterans Memorial, and we had a lot of compliments for the county. So thank you very much for the contributions we made in the past for the Disabled Veterans Memorial. It was well-attended. It was a very nice sunny day, and just wanted to share that with you. And then I sent all of you notes from our North Carolina Defense Conference. There was quite a few issues in there that were addressing property, zoning, schools, and things that have an impact on our defense community. And of course, being north of Fort Liberty, we are in the realm of receiving some of the concerns that those families deal with on a daily basis. I know Jen, I want to say your husband's still active duty? Okay. And thank you for his service, and thank you for your service. My wife reminds me often how much it, 20 years, nine months, 12 days on active duty. She, she carried a lot of that duty, I can tell you. So without further ado, I do want to move a motion? Go into closed session?
We're gonna go to closed session per NC Statute 143, 318, dot 11A4 to discuss matters relating to relocation expansion, or location expansion of a business. Thank you.
We have a motion to go into closed session. All those in question? I'm sorry.
Five-minute break.
Oh, five-minute break, yes, of course. We will have a five-minute break once we go into, excuse for closed session. We're now in closed session. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for attending.
Let's go. Are we up?
Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion been made to adjourn, any discussion? All those in favor, say in five by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned, thank you.